All right, good evening. We will call this meeting of the Amherst School Board to order on September 7th. It is six o'clock sharp as we get started tonight on our monthly meeting. We just met a couple of weeks ago. So our agenda is a little bit lighter tonight. I will open it up for public comment to begin things tonight. But as there are no members of the public here, we can quickly move on to our second item on the agenda tonight. And that is the consent agenda. Before we open up for conversation, I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda. And then a second if we have one. I got a motion by Terry, a second by Ms. Kuzma. Is there any discussion on the items in the consent agenda, which include minutes from our August 23rd meeting? An update on our unassigned fund balance and the capital improvement projects that they've been working on so far? And then our DOE and MS-25 forms and our facilities update from Roger Preston for the month of August. Any comments, suggestions, questions? Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah, so first of all, on the first item, the UFBCNA CIP memo. Great work by Roger and Amy and others, making some, some huge savings and getting a lot of projects done. And just putting together this list for us. It is impressive and helpful to see all this laid out in front of us. So thank you for that. I did want to ask, on the third paragraph of the executive summary. It says, since last year's CIP project submission, there have been changes in the funding sources for several of Amherst CNA projects. So I don't know, Adam, if you are aware of what those sources are and if we are continuing to investigate them moving forward.
I actually happen to know the answer to this too, but I, well, because I am the Amherst rep for the CIP committee. And we just reviewed this two weeks ago. So originally, we weren't going to have enough money in our capital needs or capital reserve fund for our capital needs assessment stuff, as we hit some of our bigger things over the next year or two. But because of some shifting around of projects and excess money in the UFBCNA, they were actually able to move things up. And now we won't need to go to taxpayers for excess money. We're just going to be able to go to taxpayers for the capital reserve funding in those years.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wobin.
Superintendent Steele, I will, I will ask you if, if it's something we can have for maybe November, December, sometime before the end of the calendar year. There's no specific itemized inventory on our computers. How many computers were actually purchased? Could we just request an update as to what the technology situation looks like? And maybe it's something we can get on the agenda for either twice a year or maybe at the beginning of the year, just to see where we stand after what's been purchased and then where we are in terms of rollover. And maybe it's a good thing to have at the end of the year rather than the beginning, just to get an idea as to where we're going to need to purchase as part of that ongoing technology plant. But obviously, a lot of those were purchased in about 200 and about 106,000 in technology and 240,000. And we had approved up to 300,000. So is that to assume that we're not going to use the remaining 60? Or is that what's going to be able to be used for some of the other projects that Beth just talked about?
So we were able to purchase everything we needed, we needed, but I'll, I'll have this spreadsheet updated with the actual numbers. It does have the actual cost to the right.
Correct.
Just doesn't have the quantities there, correct?
Yeah, for the computers, it just doesn't have the, the number that they purchased. So just where we stand. And I know we had a fairly comprehensive spreadsheet probably two years ago now before COVID hit with where we stood with computers, the life cycle on and the lifespan of how many one year, two year, three year, et cetera. So just kind of an update on that every six months or, you know, at the end of the year, just to see where we are and what we get back. And where we stand going into the next year for updated computers. So especially with the one-to-one projects and goals that we have for students in this new potential remote era that we have nowadays. So not that we're going remote, but that we have remote days potentially with snow days or whatnot. So I might get nervous that we're closing schools tomorrow. So anything else?
Yep. I just want to piggyback what Josh was talking about. And I know when I was serving on the Ways and Means Committee, we talked a lot about the difference between hiring in-house for electricians and plumbers and different tradesmen like that. And I just want to really give a shout out to Roger Preston for making that change and for realizing the savings. And doing so, because I know that we, Josh had mentioned about the funding sources. And I think a lot of these projects were able to be realized because of in-house funding versus having to pay contractors.
And I think, I think Beth mentioned that, but I think it's worth reiterating again that these people are now in-house. So when they can do the lighting updates, we're not paying the contractor fee. So it's just worth highlighting that what that means in the end is that we as taxpayers and you at home listening as taxpayers, we don't see that on our, on our tax bill or in the, you know, on the tax bill when it comes around twice a year. So that is a significant savings. And every little bit, you know, 60 grand here, 60 grand there, you start to have some considerable savings in there.
Yep, exactly.
Any other points on the consent agenda for tonight? Terry?
I'd just like to point out that we've done a lot of duct cleaning and trying to improve the air quality in all of schools. And I know that that is about most important always, but especially right now. And so I want to thank him for making time to get that done before we sell students back in the building.
Sorry, one more thing to point out. Rogers pictures of all of the different facility improvements. I just, I think that sometimes as a citizen watching one of these meetings, if you don't actually look at the packet, you don't know. We've prepared the middle school for, by installing a fence, we've prepared an outdoor classroom area. The siding on the Clark School Building has been fixed for anybody who ever walks behind there and sees the holes in the siding. They are not there anymore. There's also a ball wall on the back, which is sturdy, so the kids can play against it. Along with the skirting and the ramping for the portables over at Wilkins, which are, we're in dire need of that. So I was really happy to see that along, obviously, with the new playground mulch, which is needed every year for safety concerns.
And, and for folks that are interested in it, and you know, Victoria mentioned the pictures, but there are links in the meeting agendas that when we post them, so you can get an idea as to what the air quality tests look like, what the water, water meter readings are, daily cleaning, disinfecting protocol. So it's very transparent, but obviously as board members, it's very informative for us as we're not in the buildings, especially nowadays taking pictures and looking at things. So it is very helpful to have those. And it's in all of our buildings from Montburnin to the two Amherst buildings that we're most concerned with. And then certainly South Heagan as well. So. Correct. Excuse me, three buildings at Amherst. I'm already planning for, I'm thinking ahead to 2027 when we have one elementary school. Any other comments on consent? Okay, I will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Consent agenda approves as is by a five to nothing margin. All right, so next item on the agenda is budget season. This is our, this is our last meeting where we don't really have to get into the details of the budget, right? So if you're not sick of numbers yet, then next month you will be. So I know that our business administrator, Amy Facy, is working on the budget, putting things together. So we'll have a presentation at our next board meeting in October. In your agenda packets, there is a very fancy calendar that lists out all of the dates that are important in the budget cycle from the first presentation of this budget to the board on October 4th, from, it's starting at six o'clock that night. And then it has all of the Ways and Means Subcommittee meetings. There are time when we'll be going over that to, for each of the board members to get a look at what each individual department or category in the budget is asking for, for '21, '22. And then it has all of our other workshops and meetings that we have in place to talk about those items. So to continue that process tonight, we do need to assign board members to the Ways and Means Subcommittee. There are about 10 of them, if I counted correctly. There are 10, and there are five of us. So if somebody wants to do the numbers, if we have two each, we'll pretty much get those covered. Generally, early morning meetings, other than the SAU budget meeting, which is a little bit longer, it is in the evening. The SAU approval process for that budget is different than the rest of these items. These will all be voted on by this board and then approved by voters. The SAU budget is a public forum that'll take place in November, correct? And then that will be voted on by the board members and approved by the SAU board as a whole at that time. So that is not one that goes for public vote per se, whereas all the other subcommittees are part of the Amherst budget that will be up to the public vote. So that is why that Subcommittee meeting in October is a little bit longer. Plus, there's a lot more, you know, there are quite a few items on that list. So just quickly going through the list. Perfect. A secretary and a superintendent. All right. So starting off with the School Nutrition Services, the meeting is October 12th at 7:30. Does somebody want to jump on that one? I will do that one. Okay, Terry, if you, Terry, I will let Terry have that one as well.
Are we trying to do two for each or one?
Yeah, if we want to do two for each, I mean, that's roughly, I know some of them, they're a little bit weightier, Clark Wilkins, AMS. Those are weightier ones. Transportation's not as, as heavy. Curriculum's a pretty heavy, heavy budget item in terms of the content, if not the actual numbers. So we can sort of divide it up by, you know, that if we need to. So who would like to do transportation on that 12th as well at 8:30? I can, I can do transportation. That's fine. Is that right with you, Josh?
Yeah, that's fine. So we only need one member per.
Yep, we just need one member for each. Did we do one or two last year? We did two last year. So why don't I join Terry on School Nutrition? And Josh, you want to be the second on Transportation?
Sure.
Okay. So Clark Wilkins, who would like to jump on that one? We have a second one for Clark. Josh? For AMS, that is October 15th.
I'll take.
Victoria wanted to be the first and Terry you can be the second.
Yep.
Okay. Curriculum, that one is on October 18th.
Okay.
And Victoria? For Technology. So we're all going to have more than two, by the way.
Yeah.
Terry and Josh, Special Services, I don't mind doing that one.
I don't either.
Okay. Do you want to do that one? Facilities. I know Beth, you are on the, Victoria, you've done a lot of facilities work as well. I have as well. So out of the three of us, we can.
I'm good with you guys taking it.
Capital items miscellaneous?
I'll take that.
Josh and Victoria?
Yep. So for the SAU.
Yes.
I am the appointed person from the SAU board for that. So that should probably be somebody other than me for that. So if I need to take something from someone else.
Now, does that one is only one rep, I believe.
I was going to say that should probably.
Problem with a quorum if we sent two. If we sent two, we would. That's why it's only one. Would somebody like to do the SAU?
I don't mind doing that.
Okay. Beth will do SAU. So I have Terry and myself on Nutrition. It'll be Josh and myself on Transportation. Beth and Josh on Clark Wilkins. Victoria and Terry on AMS. Curriculum will be Beth and Victoria. Technology will be Terry and Josh. Special Services, myself and Beth. Myself and Beth on Facilities. Capital and items will be Josh and Victoria. And then the SAU will be Beth and Victoria will serve on that board, but as a member of the SAU board and not the AMS board. So you can see the rest of the dates that are on there. So if you want to get them in calendars now, it's more of a note to myself to take that on. Do that. They're all on my calendar. So we have those.
I believe Amy will be sending invites as well.
Correct.
Invites. And go ahead, Victoria.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, I mean, it seems fine to me. We can look at it if you want to write down what you, I mean, it looks like everybody has about four. I know I have four myself. I think Beth might have five. So Beth, if you want to get off one of them and.
Yeah, I think I've only got three.
I don't, I, I can't, but I've got, I, I'm fine.
Victoria, you have the fourth.
I have the fourth.
As well, so. But if you want.
AMS and curriculum are both rather heavy, so it does not matter to me.
Yeah, and Terry, you tend to work crazy hours sometimes, so I don't mind taking the actual load for you. I really don't.
And if you get to a point where you can't make it and you need one of us to cover, we can.
Yeah.
Likewise, anybody that has that situation now. And that's why we do send two, because if one can't make it, we still have somebody else that's there to. What I would suggest is if you find you can't make it to one of these meetings, you have questions that you want answered, I would say send that to the other rep to confirm that they're going to be there. And then to make sure that they can, at least potentially cover some of those items or try to get answers and some of that clarifying information if needed. So because by this point, we'll, we will have had the budget and we will have all been able to go through and review things. So we can, you know, we can certainly make some informed questions if you're not going to be at one of these Subcommittee meetings.
And, and we all have the ability to ask questions on all sections of the budget and the question sheet at other points. So which is handy. Prior to us seeing the budget, I just want to throw out there from, with past experience on Ways and Means, I think it would be the most helpful if the Amherst School Board can put forth all of the questions, as many questions as possible that we have prior to these Subcommittee, many meetings, so that we get the most accomplished at those meetings, so that there's the least amount of like lag time and follow-up as we go forward, you know, after that.
If I can ask Adam on, to build on your, your point, Victoria, I know in years past, we've had the spreadsheet. I believe we've had it prior to that first presentation. So I presume we'll have that. And I presume that there's a question sheet on there where we can ask questions and kind of get answers before that presentation on the 4th. Is that the timeline and how that works?
I believe so.
Because I don't see it on here.
And you'll definitely have it before the board meeting and before those Ways and Means Committee meetings. How quickly before the board meeting, I'm not sure.
But I think if we can at least have it, because I think it's probably more important to ask some of the individual questions at the Subcommittee meetings, so that we're not asking 100 questions on the night of the 4th.
Sure.
So as long as we have it before the 4th, you know, just to review and be prepared to coming into what it's going to look like. But then we can have, you know, a little bit more time to answer those questions and to give your staff time to answer those questions before the Subcommittee meetings. I think that'll be helpful. I know it's a truncated window, but that's unfortunately the nature of the budgets where, you know, you can ask two once in advance.
I know last year, we were, everybody was asked to ask questions in the, like, in the actual spreadsheet by a certain date. And then there was a lockout period, so that our staff actually had time to go and answer the questions so that we could get enough data before heading into the meetings, kind of like what Victoria was saying. So that we, we got some of those, you know, I don't want to say easier, because sometimes, a lot of times they're not. But some of those initial questions out, so we could just get through and make those meetings more productive. So yeah, I, I, I think Amy's planning on doing a lockout period again, given the conversation I had with her at the end of last budget season, but I might be wrong.
And we had talked about, I believe I, you and I communicated via email regarding an organizational chart that will go along with the budget. So we can kind of see, yeah, okay, so that'll be included there. Perfect. And Victoria, you had asked about that.
Yep. And the only other thing that I would bring up is that Ways and Means Committee is probably looking for volunteers still, maybe. I'm not sure if either of you know about the status on that. That's something where, so Nate Jensen, our moderator, is the person who appoints the people to the Ways and Means Committee. As far as I knew, there were several spaces available. So if anybody from the public wants to jump in and learn more about it, you can contact Nate Jensen or Tom.
How are those usually advertised, so to speak?
It's up to the moderator. And so he generally has just accepted people contacting him directly, and then he makes a decision, correct?
Yeah. So if you do want to email us then on the board, if, if you don't feel comfortable or you can't get in touch with me, you can email us directly and we can certainly forward that along. So it's not like there's a job posting board, but you know, Ways and Means positions, it's not exactly a position that's billable like that. But if you, if you do want to serve on it, then, you know, you can email us at the board and we can certainly reach out on your behalf to Nate and make those connections. There are serious, fairly substantial series of meetings. It's like every week, every other week for a while through the fall season, roughly October to December. And obviously, if it needs, needs to be more than that, then sometimes it happens as well. So the only other Subcommittee I thought about was Ways and Means. We usually have people that are involved in those meetings.
It was Beth and I, I think.
Yeah.
It's you and Beth. Oh, sorry, because we had discussed that in our organizational meeting. My apologies.
No, that's all right.
Yeah, so as long as we're covered there. So and again, obviously, if one can't make it, the other can, can let them know. So. Anything else on Ways and Means Subcommittees?
The only other question I had was if these, in the past, while in my one year doing this, these were remote meetings. I assume they'll be in person. I'm wondering where they will be.
So I believe these will be mostly be held at the Brick School.
Okay.
If not exclusively. But when Amy sends out invites, she'll include, she'll include the location.
Okay.
Will there be a remote option? No. So unfortunately, they have to be in person because they are like a school board. They, they don't have, they have to meet in gerson, have minutes and be posted and all of that. They're public meetings.
So that full schedule obviously will be, will be out there and locations will be out there when the meeting invites are all sent out for us and for public purposes as well. So. Again, if anybody needs to change anything on these Subcommittee's throughout the year, just be in touch with me and we can, we can work on ways. Or whoever you want to swap with, we can just make sure we get it in the, in the cards there, so we have that reconciliation and accountability. So moving on then, if everybody's set there, we have the New Hampshire School Board Association is hosting its annual delegate seminar gathering? I think they call it a gathering, don't they?
Assembly.
Assembly, there it is. They're hosting their Delegate Assembly in October on the 16th. And Beth is our chair's elected representative or appointed representative to that Delegate Assembly. And every year, they go over a handful of resolutions that are proposed by school districts around the state, school districts or school boards. And they sent out a recommendation notice essentially to us last month, saying these are the recommendations we'll be discussing at the Assembly. And they cover a variety of different topics from, what is the, I want to, it's it's not, it's divisive concepts. It's divisive concepts teaching to internships for students and certain things. Making sure that NHSBA dues are paid appropriately and on time and depending on how they're paid. So it's a variety of resolutions. So Beth will be representing our board. Everybody's had a chance to go through these resolutions. Most of them are pretty milquetoast. A couple of them are not even recommended to be voted on by the Delegate Assembly or they're voted on to be turned down as opposed to approved. But there are a couple that are worth noting, but if, does anybody have any in particular that they want to talk about to see where our board stands on? And to see if we'll recommend Beth vote against what the Board Directors at the NHSBA is saying.
So I just wanted to provide a little bit more information on how this works. So what happens is one member from every single school board around the entire state, but as a member of the New Hampshire School Board Association, is invited to go and partake in this Delegate Assembly. Only, like, more people are allowed to show up, but only one of us is allowed to vote. And what these resolutions are is it tells the New Hampshire School Board Association what to advocate for or against at this, during the state legislative sessions. So anything that involves the schools, it, it tells the New Hampshire School Board Association how the state, you know, how its members feel about certain things and tells them how we want to advocate or not advocate for, you know, specific legislation around the schools. So what happens is even if, let's say, we vote against something this year or we vote for, I, as a member of Amherst, votes against something, but it actually gets approved. It has to pass three years in a row in order for it to actually become a permanent resolution. Some of these things might not be permanent, because, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, especially at last year's that were COVID-specific. So it wouldn't be a permanent thing. But in order to become a permanent resolution, they have to get approved three years in a row by the membership and things like that. So just wanted everybody, community, but you guys as well, to be aware of how it works.
And as a follow-up to that, some of this, some of these resolutions are based off just recommendations by school boards. And then some of them were based off reactions or based off actual state legislation that is passed. So for example, the, the first one that they sent over to us, it was submitted by Massoma Valley School Board. And it was about establishing and maintaining a scholarship fund for student reps who have served on their district school board during their high school career. And essentially, the NHSBA is recommending they don't support it as a board because it's not an actual legislative policymaking thing. It's more of a feel-good thing. And they say that there are other ways that you can do something like this that would have enough the impact you want without actually affecting policy and legislation in the NHSBA. So there are a handful of things like that. And then there are a couple that are reactionary too. For example, I mentioned this Keene School Board is pushing back against the divisive concepts still that passed, saying that it takes away some of the flexibility for local districts to craft their teaching policies, takes away from the local angle. You know, which has not been the case with maybe some of the COVID policies statewide, where they've let schools have a hands-on policy. So that is in direct reaction to legislation. So does anybody have any thoughts or questions that Beth might be able to answer better than I do on some of these resolutions? Or how we would recommend that she vote either with or against what the Board of Directors recommends at the NHSBA? So I, I would agree with all of them except for, where was it? A lot of these are, they, they really feel that they can be better handled locally and find better ways to handle it, which I don't disagree with. So the only one that, that I think is going to present any issues will probably be number 10. It's the one on the divisive concepts. I think this is an incredibly touchy thing. And so I don't know if I have a supporter or not support it, because as, as you mentioned, it's a three-year running policy. And who knows how long this legislation will be intact? Because in two years, it could be flipped around and turn, or not even three years, a year and a half, it could be just turned over and gotten rid of, depending on the way the state votes in the elections next year.
So with this particular thing, you know, like for this example, it would be the Delegate Assembly, if they were to vote to agree with the New Hampshire School Board Association, or even with the resolution put out by Keene, it would tell, the New Hampshire School Board Association would actually go and advocate at the state level to make adjustments to this law within the feel of what this resolution says. So allowing local, a little bit more local control for what were to happen. Not necessarily saying that we now all have to agree with it. It just, you know, to modify the current legislation to bring vote control more locally.
And so I, having that context makes me fine with their recommendation to support it. But my issue with this overall is that it's a touch hypocritical. And not to get back into the mass concept, but there are many school districts and really overall COVID policy that have been clamoring for the state to say, pass this rule, pass this rule, pass this rule, because they want the state to have top-down control. So it makes it easier for school boards and districts to be able to say, oh, our hands are tied. The state said this. So I find it's a bit hypocritical that they want the state to dictate certain things that they support. Whereas other things that maybe they don't support, they want local control on. And we all have hypocrisies like this or, you know, contradictions like this in our everyday lives. So that is the reason I, I don't know that I support their, their recommendation, because it's a little hypocritical on the overall theme of it. That said, I do think that local control needs to be a part of, you know, part of the decision-making process and everything that we do. I don't feel that the state needs to send down mandates on anything. other than, you know, making sure that all special needs kids have access to what they, you know, different things like that, they're a little more universal. So that's my only opinion on that. So that's where I would push back on the one resolution.
Okay, so really what you're saying is you, you agree that I should vote in support?
Yeah, I think, I think.
But maybe pass the message that they shouldn't.
Yes, let's not pick and choose what we want state control over, that's not a, that's not a divisive issue. It's stuff that isn't divisive, you know, caring for special needs kids to me is not divisive, providing bus transportation for those kids is not divisive. Saying that you can't teach a certain topic or that you need to make a state law, saying everybody has to wear a face mask and go in the same things seems hypocritical. That would be my only comment on that.
I will echo Tom in the importance of local control on those things and support the NHSBA.
Okay. What about the rest of them? Yeah.
Yeah, I'd say the rest of them are pretty.
Again, it's. Or they just say, don't do anything, we're not, we're just, we support this, but we're not actually making a resolution, so.
I do like the one where they want to make sure that the NHSBA gets its dues.
Oh yeah, I did want to ask about that.
That was interesting.
Before we vote to support it, are we, are we in compliance with this? I assume we are.
We pay our dues, yes.
Yes. But there's some specific way, yeah.
To NHSBA in accordance with RSA 15-5. And it, I mean, I can't let you read this on a different time.
I plead the fifth for now, but I'll go check. I, I'm sure that, given that our current business administrator was a former rep for the NHSBA, NHSBA, I'm guessing that she knows and understands this and is doing the appropriate thing. But that was my only question.
We have a pretty stellar accounting department, I think that we probably haven't covered.
Yep.
Yeah.
And something tells me we would have been informed otherwise had we, had that not been the case.
Ah, yes.
You already have it.
Reading RSA 15-52, yes.
We're good. Okay, so that was it, and I thank you for serving on that committee, Beth, I know that it's another one to be involved in, so we appreciate it. Although I'm sure that these are entertaining meetings to be part of, right?
It was fascinating last year. I, I think it went over planned timeframe by like an hour and 20 minutes. It was fascinating.
I imagine that that one, just coming up among us, was a bit of discussion, I think that will be
Yes.
A lively one.
That one will probably be a little time-consuming. I do just want to point out, heading into next year, the NHSBA asks us for, you know, we all kind of get notified throughout the year if we have our own resolutions that we would like to propose. So it's up to the board at any given time, if any board member wants to, you know, feels passionately about something, to form a resolution.
Typically, these are based off of state legislation, correct? It's not just something that we want to see them try to get the state, I guess we could ask them to lobby something for the state, too. If we felt that we wanted the state to have top-down COVID policies, we could probably go through the NHSBA to, as an example, to lobby on our behalf for that, or lobby on the district's behalf.
Yep. So like some examples from last year, just last year was a lot more hefty, is, you know, there was some ask, you know, one of them was to ask to adjust, you know, how we, so our Title I numbers come from data, they was going to be heavily skewed because of last year's COVID numbers. So to please ask them to find, you know, to kind of use the prior year's numbers instead of last year's and things like that. So, you know, it's, although it's sort of based on legislation that already exists, it was asking, you know, in that, you know, like that, it's a one-time thing. So there's a lot of adjustments, you know, you can ask for adjustments on things like that, there's but yeah, we could ask them to please, you know, lobby the state to require everybody to wear purple on Fridays, you know, like we try, we can try, but you know, like create, you know, create legislation to say whatever we want, that feel, you know, makes sense or feels passionate for our district and stuff, so.
Any other thoughts? Moving right along to our last scheduled agenda item, we had talked about this two meetings ago, I believe, when we were in the Brick School in our July meeting. The trustees of the trust funds came and just gave us some information on some of the trust funds that are set up to benefit the Amherst schools. And two in particular were the Lawrence Spalding Trust Funds, which they have their, you can find them on the website, top of my head, I'm drawing a blank on what they're specifically used for, but they basically, they were dated back to the late 1800s, provide funding for Amherst School and different projects. And then about 100 years after they were, 120-odd years after they were funded, we found out that the funds were not being used. So a trust fund committee was recommended to be formed within the district, which included school board members to analyze how we should use these funds every year. And that would serve two purposes, number one, to make sure that we're using the funds and what they were designed for, and that they're giving the schools the most benefit. But more basically, number two, to make sure that they were actually used, because they were ignored, I know a couple of years ago, we had this issue where thousands of dollars built up, it wasn't 300 grand, it wasn't a new school's worth. But it was certainly a good chunk of money from the school library to be able to tap into, and we had just, it just had fallen by the wayside over the years. So it is recommended that we form as, as part of the district, a new, a new trust fund committee, we'll kind of reinstate this to be able to analyze these funds every year, to make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck out of the money that's being collected, and to make sure that that money's being expended every year. And then increasing the actual amount that we spend in that fund on a yearly basis. So the recommendation has been that we'll form a committee with some of the administration staff, and then also board members from Amherst and the South Heagan Board, and then two members from our committee as well. We've all seen the information, we've talked about it a little bit in, in July, I believe Terry is volunteering, or do you have a question? Okay, so Terry will be one of our volunteers, somebody else like to join her?
I'll jump on. Yeah.
I'm fascinated by this one. I love all the.
I presume, it's pretty cool that it's, in late 1800s, that money's still there and that it's continuing along and that it still could potentially have a legacy, but hopefully now that legacy, it can be more impactful, because we're actively using it.
Making up for that lack of budget.
Do you know the process on how this will be formed and how, and who is it dictated by? Is it dictated by the administration, is it the board, is it those members coming together with the assistant superintendent and the business administrator?
That committee will make those determinations.
Okay. Yeah. As to when and where they'll put it together, okay. So we have.
Trust fund committee that leads it, right, because they're the ones that are asking for this new.
I believe we'll report to them how we want to use the money. We have a board rep that is part of, I apologize for not knowing if it's me, I believe that it's me, that meets with them quarterly, they haven't had a quarterly meeting since we, we last met. I believe the next one's on October, so I will be able to go back and say we have this committee formed again, and we'll be able to, you know, have better spending decisions and ideas. You know, as this committee goes through and does its work, and they'll be able to give me what we have every year to spend, or what we have currently, and then every year, what that final number is, so.
Okay.
Just double checking, pretty sure it was me, it was me before, so.
When y'all figure it out, just invite us.
Yes, so, and I don't know that you'll need to go to the actual.
Two again, Terry and?
Victoria.
Terry and Victoria. I don't know that we'll need to actually have this group go to the meeting, I think this group can meet and then just report back through the liaison to the actual trustee of the trust funds to re, to determine, you know, how we want to spend that money. Yep, perfect, well, thank you for, for doing that. That will conclude the normal items on our agenda, public comments, going once, twice. So, okay. So I will take a motion, we do have a non-public session tonight to discuss a couple of items under RSA 91A32A? A, 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 okay, A32A, and so I will take a motion to go in and on public. Terry has a motion, a second. Josh, and I'll take a roll call vote, Josh?
Conklin, yes.
Who's my yes?
Freezius.
Gothy, or yes, so we will go in and on public at 6:36 PM, thank you for watching tonight, and we'll see you at our next meeting.